All right. Hello, everybody. This is the East Cap, the City Council Property Committee. Tonight is January 10th, 2022. Get used to that. It's now 6:00 PM. I'm one of Zara, City Councilor at Large. I'll at least be presiding over a portion of the meeting. We're meeting via Zoom due to the COVID-19 pandemic and ongoing orders allowing us to meet remotely, per Governor Charlie Baker. Welcome, everybody. We have a few interesting items on the agenda today. The first item being a committee reorganization for the 2022 to 2023 term of office. I am leading the meeting currently because I was the prior chair, but I unexpectedly am now the Chair of Public Safety. So I would ask to take nominations for Chair, and I'm perfectly happy nominating JP Kuzinski, who was a previous Chair of the Committee to Chair the Committee, seeing that I certainly don't need to chair two committees. So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Counselor Kuzinski, do you accept the nomination, first of all?
I shall accept the nomination. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Thank you for your service last term.
I'm just following the lead that you set my first term in office, sir. So, you know, I believe in, we're a council of nine members and we all contribute. And I certainly don't need to chair two committees, and you did a great job. So I know you'll continue to do so. Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion as second to nominate Counselor JP Kuzinski for Chair of the Property Committee. I'll take a roll call vote, Counselor Gomez.
Aye.
Counselor Kuzinski, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Motion passes three, zero. Counselor Kuzinski is the Chair and Chairperson Kuzinski. I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Well, I thank you. Appreciate that. I would like to just acknowledge that we have three counselors here for the record as members of the Committee, Counselor Gomez, myself, and Counselor Zarrett. Just for the public record, just such a requirement of COVID meetings is that we declare at the beginning, who are the counselors acting in attendance in an official capacity? Also, I'd like to ask if there are any minutes from previous meetings that we still had on the, I thought we, that those were all pretty much taken care of. But Counselor Zarrett, was there anything else that we're missing that we need to attend to with regard to minutes?
I think that there might be a set of minutes the Council flooded submitted. I will have to jig those up, Mr. Chairman, before the next meeting.
Super. As the first order of business, I would like to see if we could establish a clerk for the Committee.
I'll move with Counselor Zarrett. I will nominate Counselor Zarrett.
I see a smile. I'll second that motion. I'm sure Counselor Gomez would have his hands full as our newly elected Council President, Counselor Zarrett, nothing to accept.
Absolutely. I struggle sometimes in minutes, but I will do my best to submit timely minutes. And I don't think property is as difficult as ordinance, so my pleasure.
Excellent. That being said, we have a nomination on the floor. I'll entertain any other discussion. No other discussion, entertain a vote. Counselor Gomez, you vote.
Aye.
Counselor Kuzinski, aye. Counselor Zarrett?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you so much for agreeing to do the minutes. It is a thankless job, but it is very important for the proceedings of our committees and for the record. So, that being said, I think we have two items that are currently on our agenda. I would ask if any other members of the public, however, have anything to comment on other than the two items that are on our agenda for the public speak. If there is anyone, and I would ask Counselor Zarrett or Counselor Gomez, are you monitoring the room for letting anyone else in? And for helping me or anyone that might have a hand up here and that we're sure that we recognize everyone? I don't see anything. So the first item on the agenda has to do with a project we've all been waiting for for a very long time and been very involved with. That happens to be the Union Street project from High Street all the way to Williston Avenue, if I'm not mistaken. And it has been taken, I'm going to say it, many, many months, many moons. And we are looking forward, I think, to coming to down to the wire here and have a group of easements that is property rights that the city must deal with prior to the project beginning. There are maps to look at, and I hope Counselor Planner Bag, Planner Bag brought his maps so that we could examine those. I'll be with you in a moment, Counselor Zarrett. And so there are lots of questions that we might have. I think basically we're looking for making sure that the easements are in order, that the i's have been dotted, the t's have been crossed. And there are, if there's anyone in the community who has any questions about these easements and any compensation that may be offered as part of that process. Counselor Zarrett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a point, Counselor Kuzinski, the other agenda items, the poll locations, including the continuing business, there's representatives here, and I just was going to mention the interest that the Union Street discussion may take longer. Would you be interested in getting those off the plate first, just so the reps can?
I would be happy to do that. However, I did want to be sure that we were respectful of the time that we'd be spending from city employees. And I don't see that we've actually have all the folks that we were hoping might attend, if I'm not mistaken. So why don't we go ahead and with everyone's permission to adjust the agenda to address the 45 Park Street easement first? This is a poll location, as I understand it. And it is at the chapel area of Park Street, where the Williston Academy Chapel is located. And that being said, if I could ask if anyone could pull up the maps? And then Counselor Zarrett, I know you had been working on this one very diligently many times. And if you'd like to add any particular comments about this before we hear from the EverSource representative?
Not specifically. I know that this got delayed. I think that there was a miscommunication with submission of this one. And we also have the Ballard Street poll too, Mr. Chairman. But it sounds like there was a clerical error potentially, and there's been some delay in this. So Nick Langone is here from EverSource. At your pleasure to speak to this more.
So I would ask Nick to tell us about what the request is all about.
Sorry to catch you up. Had to let my dog in. Could you repeat that question, please, Counselor?
I was just saying if you could introduce us to what you would like to do at this site and to accomplish. And if you, I don't know if Counselor Zarrett, did you have that map?
I have that.
I don't know if you can pull it up. Can you share a screen? There we go. Can you see the screen that is currently being shared, Nick?
Yep. Same map I was going to pull up. So I'm working on behalf of the customer, which is the Williston North Hampton School. They wish to provide a service upgrade to the chapel. Currently, the chapel is fed from the adjacent building, and they need to give it its own service, so I think it can upgrade its HVAC. And to do so, we need to install a new pad-mounted transformer behind the chapel. For us to do that, I determined that the best course of action would be to install a new pole shown on that map is P130 slash 14M. So that's a midspan pole between two existing poles there. And from there, the school's contractor will trench to that new pole and put conduit underground, and we will run lines to the transformer behind the chapel.
That seems pretty clear. Were there any other questions for Mr. Langone from the counselors? I had one quick question. Approximately how far off the roadway is the pad going to be located? Is this two feet, four feet, eight feet? Is it more like 15 feet?
So the, this petition is for just the pole. The pole should be probably five feet from edge of pavement, just right in line with the rest of the poles on the street.
In line with the rest, that's good.
Yep.
I couldn't tell, we didn't have a fine scale on the map that I have before us here. But if it's about the typical distance, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yep, it'll be right in line with the rest that are on the street.
Is there anyone in the public, then, that has any questions about this matter? For Mr. Langone, since he's here? The typical language, I'm afraid, I do not have in front of me, since I see no other questions. I would ask if Counselor Zarrett has that? I see the request. Is there a motion that we, I would be happy to entertain a motion and wondered if when you were presenting it, if you'd like to pull it up? If we have it available. If not, I would be happy to report this out without a motion. Counselor Zarrett?
I mean, I don't have a formal motion prepared, Mr. Chairman. I could probably create one right now based on the request, if that pleases you.
Counselor Gomez, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. My suggestion as the Council President is if we don't have the language today, we just make a motion to approve this pole location and have the proper motion for the full City Council.
That would be agreeable with me. I see Counselor Zarrett shaking his head, so we'll be happy to entertain such a motion. Is that in the form of a motion, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? The motion is for making a recommendation to the Council to approve the pole location with language to be provided at the time of the next meeting.
Forty-five, it's for 45 Park Street.
For 45 Park Street. I would ask Counselor Zarrett for his vote?
Yes.
Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
And I. Aye. So motion passes three to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Langone, and I'm glad we were able to get you out of here.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Except before you go, the Ballard Street, was there further, was there further someone I was prepared to? I know there were questions about that, and I know throughout last year there were questions that Counselor Zarrett had.
I'm actually covering Ballard Street, Anthony Gentile.
Great, so if we don't need Mr. Langone, you're certainly free to go, but you're welcome to stay also, since this is a pole location at 2030 Ballard Street. Mr. Gentile, could you tell us about what your plans are? And I know there had been questions from another in public, a member of the public, and I was hoping that those questions had been answered. So let's proceed. Mr. Gentile?
Can you hear me?
You're breaking up a little. If you could speak slowly, maybe we'll be able to catch it, I hope.
How am I coming through right now?
That's perfect.
Let me kill my video. Maybe that's taking up too much bandwidth. So I met with, I'm blanking on her last name. It was a woman named Searing something. She had some concerns. She's at 21 Ballard Street. I met with her out onsite, cleared up her concerns. She was wondering if we were going to be digging her party. The answer is no, we're going to be across the street from her. So aside from her, I don't know if anyone else had any concerns.
Counselor Zarrett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was the sole resident that had concerns. And I have to say, I do really appreciate EverSource taking the steps to meet with the resident at their residence and addressing these concerns. So thank you. They definitely helped. I did not hear from anyone else. That was the sole one.
Excellent. And I thank you for addressing that, Mr. Gentile. If there was no other questions, I don't know if Counsel Zarrett happened to have the motion for this matter, or shall we do as we did with the previous question with 45 Park Street and have a motion to recommend the approval with the paperwork to be provided?
I don't have a motion in front of me, so we'll get both of those from the clerk. But I'll make a motion at this time to make a recommendation to the City Council to approve the pole location at 2030 Ballard Street.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve the one pole location at 2030 Ballard Street. I would ask us at this time if there's any other discussion? We'll have a vote.
This is Nick Langone here, real quick. Just, I noticed just from your language that the request was for one pole location. I think we were also additionally petitioning for.
Point of order, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I will acknowledge the point of order. We do, I would ask that it be withdrawn if the counselors would so move, so we could hear from.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Yes, that being said, Nick, please.
Sorry, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the language sounded like we were petitioning for one pole, which we are, but we're also petitioning for underground primary down the street as well. Was that accounted for in the documentation?
I believe it is in the documentation. However, it's not in my continuing business notes here for the agenda. I believe in the final documentation. That's what we'll be discussing, and we'll make sure of that. Counselor Zarrett, you were?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There was, the full proposal does include significantly more infrastructure from EverSource. And so I think I could try to find it for you now, but I think we did already in the previous meeting recommend this just pending approval or addressing of the concerns of the resident. So we can make sure that we have the appropriate language at the full council meeting. I believe it was a pole, and there may be, I'm trying to remember if there were two two pad-mounted transformers, I'll have to look.
That is correct. It's two pads. And I've actually got the map, if you want to take a quick look at it. I can share my screen.
I think we did discuss the matter. If the other counselors don't feel the need to look at this, we can proceed. If they do, then I'd be happy to have it called up. That being said, are we ready to go back with the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the Ballard Street proposal from EverSource to the full council pending a full motion to be presented at the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second regarding 2030 Ballard Street. Counselor Zarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Kuzinski, aye. That passes three to zero for the recommendation to the full council, which we do expect, I hope to have for our very next meeting. Thank you all.
And I would recommend both if they can come to the next full City Council meeting, just in case any other councilor have any questions.
That is an excellent recommendation. I hope you guys are there, can hear this. We expect, that'll be next Wednesday, Wednesday of next week, beginning at 6:15.
Very good.
Thank you.
I will be there.
All right. Orders are taken next on the agenda. I think we had a brief introduction about this matter. It's the Union Street project. And I would like to see if they have any specific questions or comments from any of the other counselors before I would ask Counselor Bag. Counselor Bag, you're not going to get away with it this year, are you?
I guess not.
Planner Bag to guide us through this as as SECs fit, knowing that there are certain time constraints. I'm not seeing any hands of the counselors. Planner Bag?
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. Mark's iPhone is Mark Tanner, so he's the city attorney. I know he's available if need be, but we wanted him here just in case. And I don't, I don't think the city engineer will be here, but we had kind of planned for him to come too. But, you know, we've had, I think Counselor Kuzinski did a pretty good summary. We've really been taking many, many, many steps in this process. It really picked up some speed in May is when, you know, information and certified letters were sent out to all 35 property owners on Union Street. And that kind of set up a series of events that, you know, for all intents and purposes, is really concluding with this City Council vote. It is the, it's one of the final kind of city steps in this process. Once, once the vote is completed, some plans and information are filed at the Registry of Deeds, but that is also this kind of handoff to Mass DOT. Before I get into the details, I mean, we are hoping that the Council will take the vote next Wednesday. I know I spoke with Barbara, and I know that the Council has a long agenda. What she seemed to describe today was that this will be kind of last in terms of the public hearings. But it is important as possible that we try to have the vote occur because it will, you know, it's queuing us up to try to get the project out to bid. And it's been a little bit of fits and spurts, and then a little bit of hurry up and wait. And then now we're in the hurry up mode. And a lot of that's just dictated by Mass DOT in their process. So there was a packet that was submitted to the full council is in the January 6th agenda. And just this afternoon, I did email over two revised documents, and I'm going to work off of those to just give a quick introduction, but pretty minor changes. And I did try to highlight where those changes are. So what I thought would be helpful maybe is to go over kind of the actual votes, the vote. So this is kind of, this was included in the packet, but the yellow is the new material. So at the end of the day, after the presentation and after any discussion next week, you know, these are the votes. So there's seven of them. The first one is, you know, one of the actions that we're taking is we are asking City Council to appropriate $89,500 from, we have a capital fund. So this came through City Council a month ago. So the money was available, and then this is the appropriation. And what it's going to do is it's going to pay the property owners their fair market value for the easements. And the easements are broken down into basically three categories. One are temporary easements. And so that's generally areas that are going to be used for construction during construction. And where it's grass, it'll be returned to grass. In a lot of cases, we are reconstructing sidewalks. So they will temporarily be taking their property and then returning it back to the condition that it either was in or is shown to be in. Those are the temporary easements. The permanent easements are permanent takings. And so there's some language in here where we're expanding the right-of-way of Union Street in various locations. And those are kind of the permanent easements. And then there's permanent utility easements. And so just a good example is in one location, we have to put a pole, a utility pole on private property. And so there's a, there's a box getting mapped around that, and that becomes a permanent utility easement. So we're paying property owners for that. And that is, that is one of the most important things we're doing with the order of taking. Number two is added. So the city owns a lot of property down Union Street. And so the city is also granting the easements to EverSource for the projects, and we're donating them. We have not, you know, we're not getting an appraisal, and the city's not getting money. We're just donating it, and that was kind of omitted on accident from the original. But that's all listed out in Exhibit A has the spreadsheet. The essential vote is number three, to approve and adopt the order of taking. Four is award eminent domain damages. And again, it's kind of referring to Exhibit A, which is the spreadsheet. Nine property owners have donated the easements. So that has saved the city the appraisal costs and this cost of paying the fair market value. And so we need to accept that donation. Authorizing the mayor to enter all the agreements. So this is kind of normal language, but it's relative to the taking of the real property for the order of taking and effectuate it. The seven is authorize the mayor to record the order of taking. And that's, that's kind of the final step in all this. That's the essential thing that Mass DOT wants to see happen. So we are presuming we get the vote next Wednesday, and then there's a series of actions that the city will take to record it. And then, for what we know, we have concluded the right-of-way process with Mass DOT. So I'll stop sharing this. So that's really the summary of the votes. And then the other document that we have is going to be, the first item is a long resolution. And what changed with the resolution from the January 6th? It was in the first, whereas we actually have the name of the plan. We were just awaiting the final plan set. The plans themselves haven't really changed, but we were waiting for a couple of minor adjustments to have in the plan, so we now have that. You know, it's necessary, the second one, for us to do this for the project. The second, the third, whereas seems kind of generic language. The fourth one is that the City Council has determined it's in the best interest of the city to obtain the property. The next one is to, that we will donate, the city itself will donate. Let's see if I was going to try to move my screen here. The mayor will enter into the agreements, the clerk will record. And then the the purpose exchange or taking of the property for the $89,590. So those are the essential steps that we're talking about here. And then, let's see, was there anything else here? We did add, now that it's known that Counselor Gomez is the president, we, I did this today, but I included, you know, Mr. Gomez as the president for that section. Then this is the actual order itself, and so this is going to get incorporated into the process. Same, so I'll stop. I see Counselors there. Same, so I'll stop. I see Counselor Zarek has a question and then if, if the members. Want me to, I can dig into the other documents and go over the spreadsheet and go over more detailed information.
Just a quick. Just quick correction that one Counselor Derby's name does not appear on. On either the list of counselors. Had just two also Counselor Dedham is the only at large counselor. It doesn't say at large, so that's just nitpicky, but. The most important thing being that we have to make sure that we have one of our counselors on there. It's not. Unless I'm looking, I'm not seeing it, but I thought, I think that you missed Counselor Derby and Counselor Dedham just needs to say at large after their name.
Yeah, those are very good catches and those are minor in nature, so we can get those. The idea would be that we could fix that up, highlight it like we did the other changes and then that will go to the full city council. For the next meeting along with anything else we discovered tonight, but.
And the council vice president is Selin Derby. And this document shows like it is the address.
Yep, that's great. I thank you. I didn't, I was kind of thumbing through it this afternoon and I made that change, so that's good. We, we put in the placeholder, you know, for a council packet and we thought that we knew it was going to change, but we didn't know how, so that's good.
A lot of the positions were unknown when we were pulling together. Just, I mean, tonight. Normally we have a reorganizational meeting where we meet. Do the clerk and the chair and then proceed to schedule our next meeting where we're trying to accommodate the business at hand. Any other questions? I saw hands up, but I see them now down. Counselor Zarek.
Just quickly too, I, I could never get this straight, and I don't know if Counselor Gomez would know, especially since he was on the. Charter review committee. Do we use the words district and precinct interchangeably? Or do we use precinct?
It's still district until the charter came back. When the charter is, is coming back, we're approved for the, the. The new language is going to say precinct.
I was actually wondering about that myself, but so thank you for the question and thank you for the answer. Planner Bag, you were, you were still proceeding.
Fine, that's good. So those are my changes. I've made notes. I think that that's pretty straightforward and so. What I think I, if it's okay with the group, I, I think I'll open up the, the packet that went to council and just kind of go over a couple of things. I think this is the good time to do it. Because there's a, there's a lot of information that I didn't directly provided, I didn't directly provide, but it is there in case. Any of you want to see it or in kind of in the, in the, in the vein of putting it all out there, it's, it's really all embedded in that cover letter. Let's see if I can.
Those pages that have to go with what's being taken, the map. The, the key to the map at the bottom, which talks about temporary easement. Full easement. And also the sections that has to, have to do with the compensation that was being offered to the various landowners. Because I think that's particularly relevant for the public to see on screen at this time and I'm sure we'll discuss it again and show it again. But I think there was a range from perhaps sixty dollars to fifteen thousand dollars for the compensation. So those things I think are particularly relevant for, for the public.
Okay, yep, that makes sense to me. So in the packet from January sixth, this is the cover letter. It starts on page twenty six and goes, it's the rest of the packet, but. You know, we, we have had communications with the property owner since May and. Is, this has been a lot of hands on deck for this, so I, I have been involved. The city engineer has been involved heavily. And then the way it's been structured is that the city hired VHB a while back and so they have been the primary. Kind of designer and consultant who has prepared all the plans and done kind of the lion's share of, of all this. The, the city hired an appraising company, so the appraise, the appraiser went out and did. Appraisals on the properties that were not donated. That was Crowley Associates and then the city attorney has been involved, the city attorney in his office has been involved. In kind of coordinating packaging and making sure that we have kind of this, this linear process and all the details are lined up. In the packet is the resolution, the order of taking and then as Counselor Kuzinski said, exhibit A is. Going to be the spreadsheet that I kind of will go to first. And then we can go through the maps and the maps, you know. The map included is the official easement map and it's a little harder to read, but there are, we can make access to. A few other maps, so. And some of those are listed here in the cover letter. So the full easement right of way plans. Include its own spreadsheet and summary, so that's a pretty good way for people to see that it includes the size and location of all the easements. And it, and it outlines them. Then at any point after we kind of get through the, the nitty gritty here, the, the full design plans. Are shown and what I tried to highlight was that pages seventeen through twenty one, kind of go through the sections of the street. And it's really the only place where you can find like where there will be a parking space and where the crosswalk will go. And the, you know, the details of the crossing at the rail trail, et cetera, and so that's. Yeah, that's, I was going to, I was going to pause for a second here, so.
Just for clarification, if any constituents or resident or anyone in the state or anywhere. Want to see this, they can go to the city planner webpage and get that information.
Yep, right now, it can, it can be accessed from the planning department's page. We have a place for current projects and it's Union Street, obviously, and then I've, I've put this cover letter. I've put this packet there and so someone can get into this packet and then click these and I've also pulled it out and so. People can click on each of the links individually, so I did that before this packet went out, so that is all available online. Then, yep, no, that's a good question. And then the offer of fair compensation letters, so that is the. That was the official letter that the city sent to all the property owners. It was dated December ninth and I didn't, you know, we didn't include it in the packet because as I noted here, it's three hundred and fifteen pages and that includes. A cover letter, a just compensation report, a cutout of the plan for their property. And then the federal aid acquisition guide and so I did write insert link, but it's there. So that, you know, that's there and that, that covers each individual property and if anyone had questions about what was received, they, it's all there. And then the certificate of donation letters. You know, that's the nine property owners who have agreed to donate their, their easements for this purpose and so. One thing I wanted to say for, for the group is that. We have a couple of pieces of terminology that I think are important just to get a quick handle on, so. Number three, you know, that's the fair compensation letters. It's, it's an offer letter. And so I thought something that someone at Mass DOT told me like I thought was pretty useful is that it is called an offer letter. But it is the, it is the value of their property. And the whole process is an order of taking, so we just wanted to be clear that there's not. This, this is not going to be a negotiation at this point. It's, it's an order of taking and so the Mass DOT rep said. We've done a good job talking to everybody. We have most, most of the people understand what's going on and that the project will have the city's. You know, benefit overall, but it's not, th- this is an order of taking, so, so it's, it's as if we are proceeding with this. And that's what we're asking the city council to make this official. But I know that it can get confusing because we, the technical term is we've just offered this, but it's, it is this. So I'll pause again for a second. I see Counselor Zarek.
Just, so I haven't really been involved in an order of taking before and I just want to be clear, the city has eminent domain here and it's basically enforcing that eminent domain. But compensating fairly for the property that we're taking, is that a fair summary of the process that's happening here?
Yeah, yep, yeah, I think that's the, it is eminent domain that's happening. And then the, the mechanism is this order of taking and then, you know, anytime that we're going through an eminent domain process, we are, we have to. Offer and provide the fair market value, which has been identified for each, for each easement and property.
In these sorts of situations, if there were to be a property owner who disagreed with this, is there. Is there historically legal recourse if, if, if a property owner wanted to protest the, the taking by the city?
I, I would ask that, that be directed to our attorney who happens to be here, if you don't mind, Jeff.
Don't mind at all.
I am on the call. Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly.
I'm calling it from beautiful Gettysburg, New York, so I apologize. The, yeah, so the process would be if they, if they don't agree with the amount that the appraisal came back at. They would have the right to file a lawsuit. I believe it's two years after the taking occurred or up to two years after the taking occurred. And the sole issue in that lawsuit would be the value of the property right that was taken. So once the taking is recorded, it's done and over with, except for possible litigation relative to the fair market value of what was taken.
Planner Bag.
That's great. I'm glad Mark was here to answer that. So I think that was a good question, Counselor Zarek. I think it's good. I mean, you know, we don't know, I, the, okay, so this is good. I'm not sharing my screen. The other thing kind of in the nuts and bolts of this is that in that offer letter. I just wanted to make sure that the, at least the three of you were aware that it, we, we had to kind of like per the recommendation. Of Mass DOT, we had to put the date of the public hearing in the letter, so. Even property owners who may be fine with everything or the property owners who may have questions. They have been all directed to come, you know, to that January nineteenth meeting. So I did want to kind of just preview that because. We've done a lot of communicating with property owners, but we have not communicated with everyone, so. So there may be people who come with real basic questions. There may be people who come with questions about the appraisal. There may be, you know, a few who just want to tell you that they don't like the project, so. You're, you may have this kind of gamut of people who come on the nineteenth for that purpose. And, you know, I, I'm hoping that, especially at a level, I have talked to, of the thirty five, I've probably met. I don't know, twenty two of them and I think of the twenty two, I think, you know, all but two are like. When, when, you know, let's sign this, let's get it going, like when's this project going to start? So, so there's a couple of people who are just not fans of the project. And so you may hear from them, but I just wanted to preview kind of that we've done as much as we can in terms of communicating with them and. But you, they were all directed to come on the nineteenth, so that's, that was just important for me to mention that.
I have a question. Hey, correctly, if I'm mistaken, I, I believe you said that you haven't talked every single one. And so the, just so there's no question about, it's not because you haven't reached out to everyone who. You tried to reach everyone either by, by, by mail, by direct delivery or by phone. Or in, in person, everyone to tell them about the project. So that reach out has been there at that level, but the, if folks don't call you, you may not have their number. Is that, is that what's going on?
Yeah, we, I, I actually am going back and creating a diary. And so another requirement I'm asking is that we document all the interactions we've had with all the property owners. I wasn't aware of that until, until fairly recently, so I'm kind of backtracking, going through dates and things, but. You know, we started in twenty eighteen, in particular, that's when, you know, I started in February and. In, in June of twenty eighteen, we sent by postcard mail, you know, we sent a postcard to every. We did every property owner and every business owner on Union Street and the Abudding Streets. An invitation to come to a, a meeting, it was like on June twenty first or something, an invitational meeting and then there was a second. Postcard mailing to again, all the property owners and business owners for the twenty five percent design public hearing. Which it happened in like, it happened almost like a year ago today. And, and so they got that and then starting in May is when the property owners got, all the property owners got a certified letter. So that was the, the very, that was the official notification to everybody, which had information as to how to reach out to the city with any questions. That was in May and then that December ninth letter was also by certified mail, so that's. Those were the official Mass DOT requirements that we do certify mail and that's, you know, again of thirty five. It's a guesstimate. I, I could probably come up with the exact, and I think I've talked to about twenty two of the property owners who have. Reached out to me or seen me at the coffee shop or otherwise like see me at Big Y and we, you know, and I've made those conversations formal. I will say we've had, we offered Zoom meetings. Yeah, in the height of the pandemic, we last, we, we invited property owners with questions, we. Had rapid fire Zoom meetings with, with, with those who were interested and we've also met on site with like five of the property owners, so. You know, there could be a few who pop up and say they know nothing about this, but we will have a way to say. That it's, we've done the, the notices that we needed to at a minimum.
Thank you, Mr. Schreman. A quick question, do you notify them, the business owner, the building, the business owner or the property owner? To come to the public hearing next meeting or no?
So this, the, the property owner got the certified mail. For the meeting next week, so not the business owner, so if, if they're a tenant, they did not. They, you know, they're not considered the immediate stakeholder in this, in this case, in this case.
And I have a question about the easements. I don't know, is this the time to act or are you going to keep talking about something else?
I was just gonna, the next thing I was just gonna do is pull up the, the spreadsheet, so if you want to ask a question now, either way.
Yeah, the question is, is why those easements are going to be for five years, not three years or less? Why, why so many years?
Yep, we, we went through this. The ex, the exact reason I don't know, but Mass DOT wanted it for five years and so.
For the state.
Well, it could be and Mark, I don't know if you're still listening, but it could be that or we, the appraisal had a term of five years and then. We went through this process with the donations and they wanted the certificate of donations to be five years, but my expectation is that. We do not want the project to be going on for five years, but I guess it is possible. That you could be in the final stages punch lists of, of a project in, in five years. Mark, do you have any other information about why it would be five years?
Sure, I do. Just quickly, it's a Mass DOT requirement. We had initially said three years and they came back and told us it had to be five years. And I think the reasons Jeff gave are the real reasons. They're concerned with, well, what happens if there's some contingency that we don't know about? And so their standard term is five years.
Thank you.
Yeah, that could be a question we get, you know.
So I'm, I'm sorry, but basically that allows if something happened after the, the, the. The Union Street project is complete and something happened on the sidewalks and we have to do something, then we don't have to ask for another easement. Because we already have it for five years.
Yeah, Mark, do you think that?
Absolutely, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Good question. All right, so then in terms of the easements themselves. I would thank Attorney Tanner and, and Bacon Wilson in his office, because I think they pretty much put this together. It parallels another document that exists in the other packet that was prepared by VHB, but this is kind of the summary. Where the name of the property owners on the left, we have the parcel ID, the, the actual address. And then the, the middle is kind of the interest taken, which describes whether it's temporary, permanent. Or maybe it just says temporary, permanent, describes the page number and then the damage award. And they are kind of grouped, so you know, like the three asterisks there. Are related to, they're all related, so the first one, sorry, is what I was trying to say. AC there I think has, I don't know what the technical term is, but they're, whether they have a mortgage or some affiliation with Greenfield Savings Bank. So the A ten covers all four of those temporary easements. You know, the temporary easements, we, we assume they have a lower value because it's temporary access to the property. because it's temporary access to the property, and then it's gonna be restored. And then the permanent easements, um, have a higher value. And then some of the temporary easements like this, um, kind of just at the beginning, the Bernard Gall, for ninety-one oh six Union Street, um, that's family dollar. And so, why you would as, assume that's such a big pr, price tag is because it's such a long linear strip. So, it's an easement, you know, let's say it's three feet wide that runs the entire stretch of that parking lot that fronts on Union Street. And so that, that kind of, you know, the appraisal took that into account. So, let's see, I mean, these have all the, the, the dollar amounts listed for all of the damages, and that's what that would be called, is the damages associated with the easements. And yeah, I think Counselor Kozinski noted, I thought, I saw the fifteen thousand dollar one, which is, um, the highest one. So, then moving on to the next kind of category here, where it starts with Charles Edward Realty Trust on the left. So, um, these are all the, um, property owners who donated. So, Charles Edward Realty owns, um, Rite Aid, um, and then the White House, kind of going towards Main Street, and they own the building that contains, um, small oven and the dry cleaner. So, I, you know, I want to thank, you know, a couple of these property owners for being gracious enough to, to do, to donate these to the city. Claire Edward, Corville Realty is Big E's, um, the Chamber of Commerce, East Hampton Congregational Church, and East Hampton Ma Hadav is, um, the owner of, uh, Snap Fitness, Bank ESB, so they own the, where the ATM machine is on Liberty. It has a, a lot of interaction with the Bike Path area. RAB Holdings is, um, uh, Richards Fuel. Center for Human Development are the, the new owners of Manchester Hardware, so that's CHD. Wilson Northampton School, and then the city is donating. So, so we have a fair amount of property owners who have chosen to donate, you know, and, and generally that's showing that they really support the project. And I don't, I guess I would say that, that doesn't mean that the owner, other owners don't support the project either. It's just that they were willing to skip the appraisal and skip this in an effort to, to streamline it a bit.
Drop a little few, a few lines on that page. Bye, we're good, we're good. Right at the top, E twenty-three, uh, cities, where the, is, is E twenty-three and E twelve. Do you see that? It's the city, city donation. And I was just confused, because Arthur Street, um, uh, is nowhere near, Ferry Street's nowhere near the, the, the subject property. But I'm taking that this was developed as a deed description that somehow was related to that section. Because when I looked at the actual document, it, it just, it referred to something very far away. Arthur Street is off by Ferry Street, and our, and our windows, if I'm not mistaken. So, I just wanted to point that out and just be sure that I was correct in that, maybe, uh, because what we're actually talking about is an easement on, uh, Union Street, at the railroad, uh, the former railroad property that's now the Bike Path, I presume. That's what I tried to call about today.
Okay, no, that's good. Um, I will double-check that. And it's, it's referenced to E twenty, the easements are E twenty-three and E twelve, so I, I made a note to double-check that.
Three on the map, but look, so anyway, if you can just check on that, that would be.
Yep, no, it's a good time to flag that. So, then we go into, um, these, this, um, going back to kind of this, um, standard view. These are all the permanent easements, and so these are the, the meets and bounds descriptions. So, this is a requirement of Mass DOT, so this is, this, you know, this was an important step for us for Mass DOT purposes to get this done, involve the BHB and the surveyors, and then the attorney to kind of go through these. So, this is kind of a long list of the permanent easements, and they're described as meets and bounds, which is the surveyor kind of lingo for, for the, for where the property is. Um, and it's important because it's permanent, so these will, these will be get, these will get recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So, you were talking, uh, Counselor Kozinski, about the, the plans and, um.
And, and your, your key, because the key, I think, helps people understand what key and TE, temporary easement, permanent easement. And I, and, and I, I had a question about, uh, I think it was A, ABF, I'm not sure about the, so if you get to the key, and you can enlarge that a bit, perhaps?
Yep, it takes me a second here, because I have to reorient the.
Great, I'm glad you're doing. ABF along building face, and I didn't quite understand how that was.
Yeah, I mean, in a couple places, um, especially if you think in terms of where, well, my favorite place, uh, Shelburne Coffee, so that block, um, of, of Union Street has the buildings that are right on the edge of sidewalk. And so, a lot of the terminology leading up this was right at the back of sidewalk. So, that was a lot of the reasons why some of the design was the way it was, is because the buildings are right at the back of sidewalk, kind of moved up close. So, along the building face would be where, um, what they're gonna do, and again, Shelburne is a good example, where we are gonna take a temporary easement right up to the front of the building face, and we're gonna, we're gonna carefully, uh, demolish the existing cement sidewalk and then replace it new. And so, a lot of the temporary easements will go up to along the building face, just as a way to say that's the edge of where, where the work will be. So, that's kind of, I, I guess that, that would be why that's kind of written that way.
Question I had had to do with the easement, that, that totally makes sense, but permanent highway easement. And I wasn't sure if there was some distinction, uh, between a, a easement and a highway easement. Maybe this is a question for, uh, Attorney Mark.
Yeah, Mark, if you're still available, do you, did you hear the question, or about just that description of permanent highway easement?
I, I, I did hear the question, and I, I would have to take a look at specifically what he's speaking about. But it could be, um, that there are certain laws dealing with how you take easements for highways and what they are. But I, I, it would really be very specific, particular easement. I'm happy to look at it, um, when I'm back in the office. You can just let me know the particular parcel that you're talking about.
If we have further questions about it, I'll, I'll email you on that.
And I think, I, I can hazard a guess, which is that it's, it's just a slightly fancier way of calling these the permanent easements that will, so if you, if, Union Street might have looked like this at one time, just a straight set of right-of-way. But now we have a couple of jogs where the eas, the permanent easements will be. So, one of the things that we did kind of close to the end is, we added in trees. So, street trees in a couple of locations, and, and immediately upon adding street trees, we then had to take four feet around the tree and make that a permanent easement, um, for access. You know, it's for handicapped accessibility access on the sidewalks, but that becomes the permanent highway, that becomes the permanent roadway. So, you know, Mark and I have talked a bunch about these plans, and I've been looking at this for a long time. So, we've always just referred to the temporary ones as TE, and then the permanent ones as E. And so, the way this legend is, is I think it's just a little bit more of an expansive way to say the permanent easements. Um, but we'll, we'll double-check that it doesn't have some other unknown meaning.
I should come up with something that, uh, just is dramatically different or elusive, illustrative in some way. Don't, don't spend any more time on that. Counselor Zare.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, just looking at the map, uh, this goes back to your question earlier, Chairman Kozinski, about E twenty, the, the, the streets that didn't seem to, um, uh, correspond to the proximity of this project. I think those are mislabeled, because one, one of those parcels, E twelve, that's part of, that's on the Manhattan Rail Trail. So, I think, I think it's just mislabeling. And I could probably find E twenty-three too. It's a little bit of werewalla looking at this map. But parcel twelve is, um, on the, um, the tandem bagel side of, uh, the Manhattan Rail Trail. Um, and I'm sure I could find E twenty-three too, so I think that was just mislabeled.
Twelve may be, may be, twelve makes sense, if, if, if it's tandem bagel, because that was part of railroad property at one time, I presume. So, that still could have been referenced by Arthur Street and Ferry Street in some, uh, easement description somewhere, and that's why the name appears. The name appears on, in, in your listing of, uh, the various, uh, takings. So, that's why I, it, it came to my attention when I said, well, where's Arthur Street? What, what does that have to do with, with this? So, I, I think that I'm okay with it if it's tandem. If it were elsewhere on the, on the plans, I would get really concerned. It still may fall within the realm of being labeled correctly. Counselor Zare, your hand is still up?
Oh, sorry, I was just, I was nodding, and I was looking at the map while you were talking.
I think we're good. Planner Bag, you were going through the description, and I, but, we, we were last talking about the key, and I appreciate that. You were gonna show us a bit of the map. I really wish it, that it had been temporary and permanent, where a little more colored is. And, and it may be that we receive black and white versions. It just, it, it might be helpful. If it were, I wouldn't necessarily spend the time, but I, I had some, somehow a permanent easement seems more, I mean, it's certainly more lasting, more, and we're dealing with so many of them. Uh, and I wanted to be sure we understood exactly where those permanent easements were as opposed to the temporary easements. Which will go away after the five-year period, of course.
Yeah, I'm looking, I, we, we did, um, I'm trying to look and talk. I, we did have, if you don't, I, I, I have a color version of exactly what you're asking about. But, the issue, the issue would be, um, for the purposes, it's not, it will, it's no longer, so, I'm sorry, um, a while back, when we were initially having the con, conversations with property owners, we did get the question that you just asked, and we had BHB show the difference between color and, I mean, difference between temporary and permanent with colors, and so I can, I can put it up on the screen, but, BHB, yep, BHB is the city's consultant on the, for the project. The only issue I have is that that plan didn't get updated with, with the kind of the, the minute changes that have happened over time. But I can, I can show it for this purpose, if you'd like. Yeah, so, um, it's going slow. This is kind of an example of the spreadsheet that's embedded in the cover letter. I provided links to the, to the full easement plans. And so that's what this would look like. This is the official, um, plans that got submitted to Mass DOT in terms of the, the cataloguing of all the easements. Yep, so, uh, let me zoom in a little bit, and then, so this is a good example here. This, oh boy, where are we? I zoomed in too far, um. Yeah, so this, okay, so I figured it out. So, in the middle here, um, where you can see the red line going across and then the blue line. So, this is in front of the Pas, the Pascomic Club. So, for some, for some version of, of this conversation, the Pascomic Club has been pretty impacted. The good news is that they were, they were cooperative and understood the goal of the project. But what we do here is we pull, um, we take some of their property, and we move the sidewalk in. They have grass in front of their, um, property now, and we're coming into that grass so that we can pull in three parking spaces. So, we're preserving three parking spaces in front of the Pascomic Club. But in order to do that, we're taking the red is the permanent easement, and then the blue shows where the temporary easement is. And so that's where, you know, we're doing some work in the grass. But there, the main thing that we talked to a lot of property owners about with the temporary easement is, there may be no changes. But in order for construction crews to be standing on their property, or potentially move a piece of equipment over their property, we need to have this kind of temporary easement in place. So, so the blue line runs kind of almost all the way through the project. Um, and then as we go down, so this is, um, the, the property kind of in the middle here on the bottom is, um, is Pride. So, you know, we're not really doing very much work. We're not doing very, uh, there's some permanent easements on the left side, so this is the sidewalk area along School Street. But then in front of Pride, we don't really have any permanent easements. What we have is temporary easements. And so that's just to allow the construction workers to work. And then actually, this green line is regrading. So, where we are gonna touch the property, but it's gonna be returned to grass, shows up as a different color. And kind of scrolling down, um, the, the last property here on this page is the, um, the Hair Salon. That's next to, so the, the package store, Union Street Package here, and then this is the Hair Salon at Studio seventy-two. So, you know, they, we are taking a permanent easement in the front of, in the front of that property, um, for the sidewalk. And then the blue line distinguishes that temporary easement, that runs kind of that whole length in front of the, in front of that, um, property. You can see it along the top, the top, so. It, it's a lot easier in color, and, and so we did have that request, so we, you know, we had the, you know, this took the consultants some time, but they did do this. Along the top, um, and the, kind of the middle, the, the bigger blue line, that's where Manchester Hardware is. So, that's the property now owned by, uh, Center for Human Development. So, that blue line just shows the edge, so like probably at the face of the building is the temporary easement. And so, in that case, that entire sidewalk is getting, um, taken out and then replaced. And so, that's, you know, that's a good definition of, of temporary easement, where they're temporarily burdened. But then the sidewalks just, just generally replaced in kind. So, um, we have this, and I can make this available. My only caveat would be that it, it shouldn't be used for the exact easement descriptions at this point. It's probably a little outdated. So, I mean, other than questions, I, I don't have much else to say. I'm, I'm happy to field questions, or if, if Mark thinks we missed anything, or, you know. I guess kind of thinking for, um, next Wednesday, um, you know, Barbara asked, you know, how much of this needs to be read? Like, so, I think we often talk about, does the whole resolution need to be read? Going to clarify that, maybe clarify that with the attorney, but there is that vote. And so, you know, we did provide the vote, so that, that's, at a minimum, that would be read, you know, in, into the record, um, after you've taken public comment, of, of course, and, and that sort of thing.
I, I guess I would ask, uh, if, if there's no other counsel questions immediately, I would ask Attorney Tanner to kind of lay out what he sees as the appropriate process. For, uh, this is, uh, just a huge amount of work. You guys have been working on this for a long time. We want to be sure we get this right. What you see as, uh, the process this evening and next Wednesday.
Sure, so I think that the process that you've gone through tonight is, is probably a pretty good facsimile of what needs to happen at the full council. I think it would make sense to have somebody, uh, from this committee just generally introduce, uh, what's going on. Then have Planner Bag speak, give the overlay, uh, as he just did. I plan to be in attendance. I believe Jeff Murphy plans to be in attendance. Uh, so we would both then be available to answer any specific questions that either, uh, the council or, uh, members of the public might have. And then we've given you a script for whoever moves, uh, the vote forward to read into the record. And then from there, it would just be regular, uh, council procedure, I believe.
So, we're looking at, uh, the vote relative to the taking, uh, we're looking at a resolution, we're looking at a, an order of taking. I would presume that all of tho, that those must be, uh, addressed through motions, uh, or can it be done in one fell swoop with the vote relative to? How did you foresee?
Yeah, so there's, there's, I'm sorry for interrupting you. There is a document that we created. I don't know if Planner Bag included it in the, uh, the packet that you have. But it's basically a step-by-step, um.
So it looks like
script for what needs to be said to move it forward.
So that requires generally a separate motion. Uh, there's, if you say the donation, uh, the donator, the city has to donate the easement. That, that looks like, almost like another motion. So like we're talking about, uh, approving the order of taking, we're talking about uh, the awarding domain damages. Does each require a separate motion? And an action of the council. If you don't have an answer to that immediately right now, if you could look into it so we could be sure that we, we, we uh, have that proper form and procedure.
Yep. So I'm happy to do that. And if necessary, we can just break out what we've given you into, into separate uh, motions and votes. With regard to the taking, it would just be one uh, vote as to all the takings.
Right. And Mark, I have, um, I know you're, you probably can't see it, but I have on the screen, I think it's the script, so to speak, and that was included. It's uh, you know, it, you kind of, kind of wrote it to be read into the record by city councilor moving to accept the order of taking. And it says, you know, the motion, I think overall is I moved at the city council for the city of East Hampton, vote two. And then it's all seven of the items all as one. I think that's how we, I think that's how we talked it through. I have on the screen the, the revised one with, with the where we are just being careful that the city actually donates the easement too. So I, I do have that and Mark, you and I can chat if, if that's not the correct way, but I think we did talk this through a little bit.
Counselor Zare?
No, I think I, I'm sorry. I think that's the correct procedure unless there's some procedure that the council has in its own rules that would require separate votes.
I'm not aware of any.
Quite. I'm happy to take a look at that.
I'm not aware of any that would require, Counselor Zare?
Yeah, the, the way that the um, this kind of uh, outline or game plan, um, or the script, as it were, actually. Um, that's the way I'm reading it also. It's, it's a motion that outlines components that we can all vote on. And I guess I would imagine that if, if um, a single counselor or counselors wanted to break any of these out, they could always make an amendment to have those performed as separate votes. But I think for the purpose of both um, of being succinct, um, it, the way that it's written seems appropriate um, to.
Counselor Gomez, you had your hand up and then down and maybe your question was answered.
It was, um, Counselor Sarret just answered exactly what I was gonna say. Uh, probably we have to make only two motions. One is gonna be this one and the second one is gonna be the resolution and that's it.
So, there was you too.
I'm pretty sure the resolution had to be a different, there had to be a different motion from this.
I'm just concerned that an, an actual order of taking is referenced properly. Well, if there's further guidance from uh, our attorney, he'll let us know, I'm sure. Here, there's some votes that we think we might be considering this evening. Or did we just have an airing and a discussion? Is this something we want to recommend to the council? Is this the appropriate time to do so? That being said, uh, I would be happy to entertain a motion about the resolution. Uh, and I believe we've, there, there was one change, but I don't, I'm not sure that changed to the resolution. Uh, Jeff sent us a new copy with the donation to be included in that section of the, of, of the, uh, the resolution. If that, uh, number two, uh, the city hereby donates, um, that's new. Did we need to do an amendment to what was presented to us for discussion this evening? Or do we just move forward with the document we have before us?
I mean, I don't know for sure. I, I would just say maybe you would uh, recommend, you know, that the, the revised resolution and the, you know, be, be adopted at the full city council. I mean, I think we're gonna put this forward as the revised resolution, which will be the document that should be considered, you know, next week. So it is, I think calling it the revised resolution. Um, and would, I think would be fitting.
That was a motion? I will second that. Just kidding. I thi- I think that makes sense.
So with regard to the resolution, we have a motion to accept the resolution, uh, the revised resolution. And the second for that, that will include Counselor Derby here on, on, on the, on the item. So uh, if there's no further discussion, I would eh, call for a vote. Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinski, aye. That uh, can be put forth in the section revised resolution for the packet. With regard to, I'm still concerned that the order of taking, that somehow that it just doesn't seem quite appropriate to go through our laundry list of all the things we're doing without, I've always addressed an order of taking as this is the taking and it's an official thing. Uh, i- is that document now to be left out? I'm talking order of taking the large type. Um, so yeah, this is what I'm.
Yeah, so I think um, the order of taking that you just held up, Counselor Kuzinski, is the correct one. And so um, that is gonna get merged back in with the packet. So what I did for the purpose of this is I just highlighted the resolution because it had a revision. But it would go resolution. Um, and then it would go order of taking. Um, in order, the order of taking that you just um, held up references Exhibit A, um, which is the spreadsheet, which awards all the damages. And, and that, that taken together is the order of taking. So yep, so that'll be all contained. That's, that's what's being voted on. Um, so that should all be together. And then the, the resolution speaks to it directly. And then that vote, um, which I can pull up real quick here too, also refers to the same thing. So here's again the, the vote, yep.
Motion regarding the order of taking that we recommend taking has outlined in Exhibit A as referenced in uh, the documents. Order of taking document.
I heard you breaking up a little bit. I wasn't sure i- if, I weren't heard that. I don't know if you were making a motion. I, I didn't quite hear.
Can you please repeat that? Because we can barely hear it.
I wonder if you could pull up the order of taking document.
Um, yes.
That way, I, I believe we'll, we'd like to entertain a motion on that.
Yeah, I just need a moment. I'm getting distracted here. And I lost, I lost the screen on uh, that I had up with the order before. So just give me a moment. Um,
Go well in that, uh, Sean, I appreciate that.
We, we are, we know all, uh, you see what happened at the full city council last time?
Okay, I found it. Um, so again, this is in the packet. Um, oh, it, it moved. Um,
That page thirty-one?
Yes, that's page thirty-one. And so just to recap, the order of the, the the arrangement of this is in the packet. So it, it came through with the cover letter, which is there. And then um, there's the resolution. So the only thing that's different is that we added that um, whereas about the donation. So that'll be the, the, the resolution will be first. Um, with the, the whereas and then the resolved. And we'll have the updated list of council members. And then, then is the order of taking. Um, so this is all read. Um, I believe that I could be wrong, but I think where that line is with all the blanks, um, that, that now has a name. So we'll make sure that's included. And so we were waiting for that. Um, and then that's the order of taking and it refers to the plans and it refers to Exhibit A, which is the spreadsheet. Um, so that is the order of taking. And then what we provided was um, the spreadsheet. This is also part of Exhibit A. So this is the meets and bounds description that we talked about. Um, the plan set will be updated with the new, with the new version. It's just got a different title. And then is this sort of so-called script, just as, this is just a list of votes, which will also be updated to include that um, second item. So then having kind of reviewed all that, then you make these motions and you're voting on all that information that was preceding it. That's my understanding of how that, that'll work.
Counselor Zare?
I, I think I've, I've found a, a way to save us a little time in regard to the question posed as to whether we need to read the entirety of the resolutions. What's that?
Resolution?
Well, this, the, in the, in the script document where we make the vote, where we make the motion to, to uh, to, you know, appropriate and donate and the item three is to approve and adopt the order of taking. And I think in doing so, it, it assumes that we've all read that approve of that document. So I don't know if in the order of bre- in the interest of brevity, if that means that we then have to have had read into the record the resolution of that order of taking, or we could just vote on it. In, in terms of the question that Barbara had posed, or some other people had posed, we have to read both the resolutions. If we're making a motion to approve and adopt the order of taking, we, we probably potentially don't have to read it. I'm just putting that out there.
I will talk to Barbara.
We'll talk to Barbara. We'll get some further guidance from uh, Attorney Tanner. And, oh, okay. So I, I would like to rec- recommend that we uh, formally recommend the order of taking as written and also eh, endorse the, the vote relative documents. So I would entertain a motion now at this time for order of taking document to be recommended to the city council.
So move. Second.
So, so moved and second, that was Counselor Zare and Counselor Gomez second. Any further discussion about that document? Excellent. Counselor Zare, the motion is on the.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Kuzinski, aye. Three, zero. We've dealt with the order of taking, uh, and I am going to recommend that we also uh, recommend the process where we appropriate, where we discuss the appropriation of the eighty-nine thousand five hundred through uh, the vote taking effect upon passage. Counselor Gomez, sorry, I didn't see your hand soon.
That, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna ask uh, to Jeff if it is possible to get those motions ready um, a few days before the meeting and send it to, can you please send it to me and to Barbara? So that we can both have it.
Yeah, yep, that's, that's totally reasonable. I mean, we have every, all the pieces of it. So it's just making sure that it's in the, eh, organized properly. So yeah, I'll consult with Attorney Tanner and we'll just uh, at the eyes and prosthetes on the motions. That, that should be totally fine.
Yeah, at, at least one or two day, if I can have that, I will be uh, good for me to have it.
Yep. And I, one of the, if I may, I, I think one of the main questions is just trying to find out whether the resolution needs to be read. Um, cause that, that would kind of like cover all of those bases. And then we will clear, clarify and confirm this, but I think you might have, you might just move to vote on all of the one through seven. But uh, we will confirm that. So I think it's fine. Um, I understand what the committee is doing now. So this all makes sense.
Thank you. I would ask also that about a few days before the meeting, but a few days before the, the agenda goes out would be my request, if that's possible, so that the agenda could go out with the proper motions. Since we have, this is quite a bit of business. That would be my hope. Uh, sometimes that's not possible and we have to punt and go for a few days before the actual meeting. But if you, we could do it a few days before that, before the Wednesday deadline, the Thursday, the Thursday, the Thursday deadline, sorry. So if you could have it by Tuesday of next week, that would be most helpful. Then you could have a chance to talk with uh, Counselor Gomez and, and Barbara a bit before it actually goes out to all the counselors.
Does, yes, does the, well, yeah, well, the, that's what I was gonna ask. I think the agenda would go out on Thursday. Yeah, this Thursday for next week's meeting. I, I will try. I mean, I think the, the, the I, I can talk to Counselor Gomez, I can talk to who, whoever is the right person, Counselor Gomez and then Barbara and Mark, just in terms of process. But yeah, I think getting the revised, because we have slight revisions, so that's easy. That's kind of already done. And if we're just tacking on clarifying the motions, I, I would love to try to get that into the packet for next Thursday. So it is transmitted out. But that, a lot of these types of questions, I usually talk to Barbara about the, the process that she usually does for this kind of thing.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I, I think the right person in this case, I, I think is the Council President. And uh, I think he should know uh, what is gonna be the, the motion and the process.
Oh, ab- absolutely. Did I, did I say something otherwise?
No, no, no. I'm just talking to Jeff.
Okay. No, that's good. Thank you. Yep.
Good. I'll clarify. Did we want to vote on the, you entertain a motion on the vote relative to at this time?
So move.
Second.
Okay. So that's the vote relative to the eminent domain taking for expansion, items one through eight on the current proposal. All those in favor? Counselor Zare?
Yes.
Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Kuzinski, aye. Thank you. Covered that area of business. Uh, and it was, uh, as with the project, a long process for, for very complicated matters. And I appreciate everyone sticking with it and with the detail. And for Mark, uh, running up that cell phone. Any other uh, questions for this evening or for business or anything else? Otherwise, I suppose we reached a point where we'd entertain a motion to adjourn it this time.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Zare?
Yes.
Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Kuzinski, aye. Jeff, thank you. You're almost there. People will be able to be on Union Street at some time in the near, no, in the future. Thank you so much.